We are back in session and we have five action items. And fifteen intro items, but on the intro items, we're going to discuss a number of them batched up. So that if you have questions, you will say what number they are, et cetera, and, and we can get our questions answered in a, what's the word I want to say, a larger universe. Okay, here we go. C, action items. Number one, approval of the Southeast Elementary Attendance Area Boundary Changes in 2020, '21, and '21, '22. This came before OPS, October 3 for approval. This has been updated since intro. Motion please, Mr. Burke.
I move that the school board approve Scenario G for the Maple, Rising Star, and Dearborn Park Elementary Attendance Areas, beginning in 2020, '21, and for the Rising Star and Wing Luke Elementary Attendance Areas, beginning in '21, '22, as outlined in Attachment A. I further move that the school board approve grandfathered assignments with transportation for K-4 students enrolled in Maple and Rising Star in 2019, '20 through the 2024, '25 school year. Additionally, I move the board direct the superintendent to take any appropriate action to implement this decision.
Second.
Could we have someone address the comment that was made during public testimony regarding racial imbalance?
President Harris, I have a correction. I believe it came through for consideration, not approval. I just want to correct that for the record.
And it came for consideration because?
Because at the time when it came through OPS, the actual selection had not yet been made as to which boundaries were being selected. So, um, just needed to correct that for the record, that it didn't come through OPS for approval. It came for consideration.
Thank you for that. Dr. Pedrosa, the floor is yours.
Hi, Chief of Student Support, Conci Pedrosa. One little thing I just want to say, all of you who I've worked with in the past year, I'm really, just really enjoyed working with all of you, and I know that the work won't stop, that I'll see you in other capacities in the future, so thank you so much. So I just wanted to say that. Um, yes, moving forward, I'm going to actually move to, is it Ashley Davies regarding the response? Yep.
It is now. Hi, Ashley Davies, Director of Enrollment Planning. So there was a comment about racial imbalance in the recommended boundary change as it is outlined in the WAC. So, I don't have the, I don't have the WAC in front of me, but we were, do you have the actual? I do now, I do now. So the WAC talks about, the superintendent of Public Instruction shall not accept a site unless the applicant district provides assurances that its attendance policies for the proposed or modernized school facility will not create or aggravate racial imbalance within the boundaries of the applicant, applicable school district. And so this is something that we go through before we enter into any, either new school development, either the purchasing of a new school building, or if we're making a modernization as is described in here. So the relevance of this is to the Wing Luke Building, because that's the school that's being modernized. None of the other buildings in this boundary change conversation are being modernized. Prior to larger boundary change discussions, again, in order to secure the funding for these projects to happen, our team, the enrollment planning team, works with the capital planning team to take what is assumed to be our best guess at what the impact of changes may be. So we went through that about two years ago. Capital then provides that in order to continue on with their process of securing the funding as they go through the bidding and other things. As we now have an actual recommendation, if you look at the changes in the demographics as they relate to the racial balance between what is current, and again, all this is provided in the packet that's part of the bar, as well as Scenario G, we only have one instance where a school is less balanced from the definition perspective, and that's Dearborn Park, which isn't directly related to Wing Luke, given that that's a school that is being modernized. So, um, we would just also like to say, we went through a pretty extensive process with our staff, as well as the community, to talk about all the impacts. These schools that are involved in this boundary change are some of our least balanced schools in the district, just want to let that be known. And so when we talk about schools in that capacity, thinking about the elements of racial balance, the way we would in other places, isn't always as applicable.
Director Mack.
Um, and to, I guess to add on to the explanation, the other important piece is that we passed and had it, and we needed to for the OSPI requirements in January 17, so it was January 17th, 2018, when we passed the resolution, which is the title, is Racial Imbalance Analysis for Wing Luke Elementary School Replacement Project. And that was adopted by the board at that time, that we did not find racial imbalance. The analysis, though, I guess one of the questions that is raised for me is that the analysis specifically calls out Wing Luke and Van Alstelt, but it doesn't talk about the other schools. And what I think I just heard you say was that, um, your analysis on the other schools is in line with the same analysis that was done, that was approved by the board previously. Would that be a correct statement?
So in regards to that statement, that, so at the time of the analysis, it wasn't determined all the schools that may be affected by the potential change. We knew, though, given the fact that the board, the previous board had already approved a boundary change in 2013, we went off what was approved, which was the change between Rising Star and Wing Luke, which in this recommendation and Recommendation G is no different than what is, what was brought in that 2017 analysis, because that part of the boundary change did not change. The other pieces of our boundary change that we're bringing forward in Scenario G, the move from Maple to Rising Star, and the move from Maple to Dearborn Park are different, but those are not impacted directly with Wing Luke, which was again, part of that racial imbalance analysis.
Director Mack.
And for clarification, that even though this is a package of boundaries that are shifting, the, the primary boundary shifts for Wing Luke and Van Alstelt was what needed to be considered in this racial imbalance, not necessarily the other ones, because they're not caused by the opening of the school.
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Other questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Seeing, uh, excuse me, Doc, Director Pinkham, please.
Uh, can you please share for the record, what is our, um, district-wide average of white to non-white?
Yeah, so currently, I wrote it down here in my paperwork. The district average is forty-seven percent, and, and when you look at the ratios in terms of adjustments for the other schools, all of the schools are well below that.
Any other comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Seeing none, uh, Director Burke.
Related comment, more gratitude to the, the team for this work, but also an acknowledgement from some, um, community members that I spoke with that have been working on this for a long time and have been on various different positions on it. And uncertainty comes up when we talk about predictable systems, the idea that in our future, um, capacity management work, we can actually have intentionality in a policy around grandfathering, and whether grandfathering is something that we can build in at a policy level as a board priority with exception cases, as compared to right now, where it's a, something that we all talk about and would like to do, but we don't have really as policy guidance. So there's uncertainty for the community around, will we or won't we be grandfathered? If we can identify with more clarity in our policy, when we always do, and when we never do, and then maybe a little narrow set of, of circumstances that we might, we could provide families that, that confidence moving forward.
Director Mack, would the advisory committee be addressing that?
That I think is-
When we get it started?
I, yes, I think that's one of the topics that would be, um, helpful to have in front of them, that the advisory committee is tasked with providing recommendations around topics of issues that are coming to the board, and having clarity around the high-level policies, high-level guidance around student assignment, or what happens when boundary changes happen. I was talking with another director just prior to this meeting about that very challenge that we go through the boundary changes, and we go through the student assignment transition plan, and we have these churning conversations, but there's, and they're all about the same things, siblings, grandfathering, transportation, and those sorts of things. So having, having some of that be more clear, I think would be really helpful, and I think that the work of the task force can help that.
Director Pinkham.
And I'm sorry, I was doing some notes while you guys are talking up here, too. Did we get an opinion from legal counsel on this? Did they express their view on approving this?
Chief Counsel's coming to the podium.
I am, and-
Mr. Narver, take it away.
I certainly appreciate Mr. Jackins raising the issue and keeping us on our toes. I do agree with the view that was presented, that not just this provision of the Washington Administrative Code, but the context in which it appears is about approval of a site for new construction or a modernized building. The two schools that are cited in the comment about aggravating the imbalance, neither one fits that category. I don't believe that this WAC, the court may feel differently, but I don't believe that this WAC is a reason to vote no on the proposal tonight.
Other comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Director Hersi.
Aye.
Director Mack.
Aye.
Director Pinkham.
Aye.
Director Burke.
Aye.
Director DeWolfe.
Aye.
Director Geary.
Aye.
Director Harris.
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously. Thank you.
And let me just say, before you leave the podium, Ashley Davies, you are a rock star, and your outreach to the community is recognized and hugely appreciated. Thank you. Number two, six through twelve, Spanish instructional materials adoption. This came before CNI, October 8 for approval. Motion please.
I move that the Seattle School Board approve the recommendation of the Instructional Materials Committee to adopt Vista Higher Learning Series of Products for all Spanish world language classrooms in grades six through twelve, the middle and high school Spanish Adoption Committee's unanimous selection. This action will provide materials for more than seven thousand students per year for nine years. The specific materials to be approved are Cinderos 1, 2, and 3 for Spanish 1, 2, and 3, Imaginas for Spanish 4, and also IB Spanish 4, AP Tomas for AP Spanish 5. I further move that the Seattle School Board authorize the superintendent to purchase Vista Higher Learning Series as the core instructional material for all Seattle Public Schools, middle and high schools, Spanish 1 through AP 5 world language classrooms for a multi-year purchase in the amount of $400,000 in year one, school year 2019, '20, with the balance of adoption purchases to occur in future years contingent on legislative funding.
Second.
Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Diane Debacker, take it away.
We are back in front of you for an action item tonight. The, nothing has changed since we were before you the last time in terms of the question about the IMC, and whether or not it was set up properly. We still believe that according to the guidelines under 2015 at the time, that it was established properly, and the process was followed to adopt, or to make a recommendation for adoption of these materials. We would ask that you approve this tonight, so we can get Spanish materials in the hands of our teachers, six through twelve, that are not nearly thirty years old.
Two questions, please. One for Dr. Debacker. Does this include professional, paid professional development for our very capable staff?
Yes.
Question for Chief Counsel Narver, doing my job.
Yep.
Can you address the IMF Instructional Materials Committee issue that has been raised?
I can. Yes, and I didn't introduce myself last time, Greg Narver, Chief Legal Counsel. When we were here two weeks ago, President Harris, you posed a question to me about a possible board action to address the issue that's been raised about the board approval of the Instructional Materials Committee. Because we have a piece of pending litigation that involves that issue, I don't want to air that advice in a public setting. I did have an opportunity to speak to you in a privileged setting. My advice was not to change the bar, but I do want to say, we've got two possible paths to take here procedurally. Friday, January 17th is when we're going to have the hearing in court on the science curriculum. We anticipate we'll get a ruling that day. Courts usually rule from the bench on these 28-day appeals. Courts can also take six months to rule. We don't know. But we anticipate we'll learn something that day, and we are, and believe we have good faith basis to argue that the, as Chief Debacker said, that the process that was followed, the science adoption, was compliant with state law. That's the position we're taking in that, in that case. If this board wanted to wait and see what, what happens in that provision, in, in that hearing, I know there is a regular board meeting scheduled for Wednesday, January 22nd. The proper procedure would be, under Robert's Rules of Order, would be for the board to entertain a motion to postpone consideration of this to a date certain. We'd at least know how that hearing came out. That being said, our position remains that this was, this was done appropriately, and so certainly, we don't want to see the board vote no, assuming that you don't disagree with the curriculum. It would either be a yes vote tonight, and either way, we're going to wait and see what happens in court in, in January.
Chief Academic Officer Debacker, what would be the consequences of a delay?
It would just be, um, we want to get the curriculum to the teachers as soon as possible. If there was action tonight that was positive, we would be able to order those and possibly get those in in time for the second semester. So, you know, we have a delay as is, but it would just delay it a little bit longer.
Questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Director Mack.
Aye.
Director Pinkham.
Aye.
Director Burke.
Aye.
Director DeWolfe.
Aye.
Director Geary.
Aye.
Director Hersi.
Aye.
Director Harris.
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Number three, Resolution 2019, '20-17, Certification of Excess Levis and calculation of General Fund Levy rollout, rollback for 2020. This came before A&amp;F, November 4 for approval. Motion please.
I move that the school board approve, I move the school board approval of Resolution 2019 slash 20-17, certifying excess levis and calculation of general fund levy rollback as attached to the board action report. Immediate action is in the best interest of the district.
Second.
Chief Financial Officer, Jillin Bergy, take it away.
Good evening. The State of Washington requires Board of Directors to annually certify to the county legislative authority the estimated taxes to be collected for the school district in the next calendar year before the 30th day of November. So if we don't certify, we don't get to collect our levy. We do this each year. Each year it comes to you as intro and action, because we don't actually get the county amounts in a timely enough manner to turn it all around between when we actually get the data and making the November 30th deadline. So as, as part of the annual certification process, we have to roll back our levy, because we do have more voter authority than we can currently collect under state law. There were two changes that the Audit and Finance Committee requested. We did add a, a section that shows how the 2020 levy is defi, divided across the school years, because this is a calendar year collection. And then we had updated the language on the, we added some language in the bar about the OSPI report, which I actually think I can, is not needed at this time, because we did call OSPI, and they did send us a corrected, they corrected the state report for us to add the language about the $3,000.
Somebody has connections there.
That would conclude my comments.
Director Mack.
I much appreciate the responsiveness to those corrections that were requested, and appreciative that OSPI corrected that, those inaccuracies in that form, so, thank you.
Other questions, comments, concerns to my colleagues? Director Pinkham?
Okay, there, so they're probably going to come back to me, I gotta spit out something that's not, it's nothing too big, but general fund levy isn't always capitalized. In some place, fund wasn't capitalized, and you had general fund levy capitalized in other places, so.
Thank you.
Just one of the things Chris Jackins has taught me to look out for, those subtle little errors. But that was in the resolution itself, the second whereas, the fund isn't capitalized.
CFO Bergy, were you here to hear Mr. Simmons' comments during public testimony at all? Regarding-
Not Mr. Simmons.
Using some of this, some of these funds?
No.
Fair enough. Okay. Other comments, questions, concerns? Roll call, please.
Director Pinkham.
Aye.
Director Burke.
Aye.
Director DeWolfe.
Aye.
Director Geary.
Aye.
Director Hersi.
Aye.
Director Mack.
Aye.
Director Harris.
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Number four, approval of the successor collective bargaining agreement between Seattle Public Schools and the International Association of Machinists and Aerospace Workers, Local 289, for September 1, 2018, through August 31st, 2021. This came before Executive, November 13th, for approval. Motion please.
I move that the school board authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with the International Association of Machinists and Aerospace Workers, Local 289, with the wage schedules and other attachments in the form of the draft agreements for the period September 1, 2018, through October 31, 2021, as attached to the school board action report, with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent, and undertake any necessary actions to implement the contract. Immediate action is in the best interest of the district.
Second.
Okay, Clover Cod. Chief Human Resources Officer. Dr. Clover Cod, take it away, please.
Sure, thank you. So as stated, this is for a three-year agreement that covers actually last school year, this school year, and next school year, just to be clear. It's pretty straightforward. We did do across-the-board wage increases, which I'll go over in just a moment. We gave an increase to the tool allowance from $500 to $1,000. We made language changes to comply with the Supreme Court Janus case, which basically said you cannot compel people to join a union or pay union dues. Language around the transition to the school employee benefits board, that's, we just finished that process. And we are transitioning employees to receiving paperless pay stubs or pay information. So the wage increases are 3.1% for last year, starting 9/1/2018. Then on 9/1/2019, a 7.5% increase, inclusive of the inflationary price deflator. Implicit, see? You never get it right. And then on 9/1/2020, it will be a 2% increase. And if the-
This covers how many employees?
Six people.
Six people.
And six, yep. Another one coming to you has sixteen people. This one has six people, and the grand total fiscal impact is $140,623.
Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Director Burke.
Yesterday morning, I was sitting at a table with a bunch of folks from Skilled Labor, and one of the fellows was from, I forget the affiliation, but basically representing auto mechanics. And so I'm curious, I was just sort of scanning through here, trying to find words like apprentice or apprenticeship or training. Is there any language in this that helps support the idea that we should be employing our students?
So nothing was negotiated, so I do not know if it's already in there. I can find out, and, well, I guess, email.
Friday memo?
Put it in Friday memo, which you can still read, because it's public. But we didn't negotiate anything new, so I actually don't know if it's in there or not.
So I'll just call it a, a, a point of further conversation, that as we're working with our other trades around student and community workforce agreement, things that are building into the spirit of that can really apply to all of our trades and all of our students. And this, this person that I was sitting with was describing what a, a high-demand pathway the, the automotive trade is becoming now.
Couple more Friday memos.
Other comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Director Burke.
Aye.
Director DeWolfe.
Aye.
Director Geary.
Aye.
Director Hersi.
Aye.
Director Mack.
Aye.
Director Pinkham.
Aye.
Director Harris.
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Number five, approval of Board Resolution 2019, '20-19, resolving that those persons newly elected, November 5, 2019, to the Seattle School District Board of Directors be designated to attend the Annual Conference of the Washington State School Directors Association, to be held November 21st through 24th, 2019, as representatives of the district. This came before Executive Committee, November 13th, for approval. Motion please.
I move that the school board adopt Resolution Number 2019 slash 20-19, as attached to this board action report, resolving that those awesome persons newly elected, November 5, 2019, to the Seattle School Board of Directors be designated to attend the Annual Conference of the Washington State School Directors Association, to be held November 21st through 24th, 2019, as representative of the districts, district. Immediate action is in the best interest of the district.
I saw what you did there. You inserted a word. Scrivener's privilege, apparently. Director Mack. You amended the motion. Director Mack.
I just wanted to say that I greatly appreciate that I know that four other directors are attending. And that's exciting, too, because I do think that the information at WASDA, the collaboration with other directors from across the state is really, really useful. So, uh, thank you, newly elected directors, for jumping in and-
Nope. Comments, questions, concerns?
Roll, please.
Can we do this one by acclamation? Mr. Chief Counsel? Roll call, please. Tried.
Director DeWolfe.
Aye.
Director Geary.
Aye.
Director Hersi.
Aye.
Director Mack.
Aye.
Director Pinkham.
Aye.
Director Burke.
Yep.
Director Harris.
Aye, and thank you to Ellie Wilson Jones for putting this together, quick like a bunny, and elegantly so. Number D, intro items. Number one, approval of contract amendment with Epi use for temporary and emergency backfill of systems, application, and product. of systems, application, and products, SAP, staff support, feel better. Came before ANF, November 4th, for approval. Approval of this item would authorize the superintendent to execute a contract amendment with Epi use for a total not to exceed NTE amount of $403,200, including taxes for emergency SAP, staff support services, with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent, and to take any necessary actions to implement the amendment. CFO Bergy, take it away. And did you hear public testimony regarding this? Thank you.
I did. So this has been in the works for quite a while, probably more than a year. We've been evaluating how we get additional staff in. We had a couple of staff leave, the SAP team, and then we have the School Employees Benefit Board work come on top of that. So we have been putting applications out to hire, have not received any applicants that are qualified, so had been putting this out on a contract, knowing that that's likely where we would be going. We anticipate with the way that the market is working in Seattle right now, it is super tough and competitive. And SAP is the same software that many large corporations use as well as other large urban districts. So there is quite a demand and not enough resource to go around. It's just really hard to hire those folks. And they can command a price higher than oftentimes we can pay according to our salary schedule.
So how many folks is this taking into account that have left the district?
So we've had, we've had one person actually leave an empty spot. We had another position that we had slated to try to fill. Neither one of those positions has been filled yet. And we had additional work come online for the School Employee Benefit Board work, where we have to reprogram the system and feed that data now to the healthcare authority.
Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Director Burke?
Who oversees this role and, you know, can, can help? Now, obviously, depending on how much we modulate this, it depends, it affects our total cost because it's a not-to-exceed amount. Who oversees that and how is that optimized?
Ultimately, I do. Underneath that, that's the Executive Director of Information Technology, and then there is a Director of Information Systems, Judy Jaeger. So there are several layers of us who are working on this. I don't think this is going to be the last one of these that we see, given this market. I think this may be our reality for a while now. We keep those positions posted. Oftentimes, what we also try to do is, and we've had success in this a few different times, bring someone in as a contractor and then we turn them to an employee. So we have success that way as well. Or we have to bring someone in at a lower level, a lower skill level than we would like, and our consultants actually help us train them to take over that work. So we try to explore all of those avenues. It's expensive and there, I, I don't know of another way to get around it.
Other comments, questions, concerns? One of the things you just said is you expect this to happen in the future. Can you give us a little more on that for the heads up, please?
Yeah, I don't expect us to be able to find the staff who can do the complicated, high-end work that we need at this point in time. If we get lucky, we'll find someone who has base skills that we can train over the next six to 12 months. But even that, at this point, we have not found a candidate.
Director Mack and then Director Pinkham?
Just a side comment, that maybe we should be having a couple of high school classes on SAP programming.
SAP is a software.
Maybe this is a CTE track.
Director Pinkham?
So sorry, I wasn't at this ANF meeting. So is this to replace just one staff member? We're going to pay $403,000 K plus to, because in it, you say, but we lost a, our, our expert.
We lost one person who'd been here for several years. She was really doing more than one person's job at that time, but there had been, so again, this is really a couple of different vacant positions, as well as some extra project work to get us through.
Then I would hope maybe to make that a little more clarifying, that we're not just replacing one person that left, we're actually replacing the one plus, maybe filling some other positions. Because to me, the way it reads, we just lost one person and we're paying over 400K to replace that one person.
Director Mack?
We had a robust conversation in ANF about this, and we, we do every time we have these personal services contracts that come forward that are incredibly expensive. And I think it is something that we need to take a look at systemically in the district because of, we have limited dollars. And it's concerning to me about how the cost under contract work may be running away from us, and then we can't have enough librarians and counselors and so forth in our schools. And so this bar is concerning to me, though I think we need to approve it because we have no option at this point. However, systemically, I'd like to make a request that there be some analysis done around the entire district and our contracting practices and whether or not we can actually shift that back to having more FTE in our salary schedules and not having the cost go out of control.
So I would just say, if I might.
Please.
I feel like we've done that work. I feel like we have explored those other options. I feel there is a lot of evidence that says we have underfunded our systems and our programming in this district for a long time. And I think that we're seeing the, you know, the results of those actions, trying to push those dollars to the classroom is always important. But we've done it to the extent that we have significant issues that have to be addressed or we're not going to be able to actually pay people.
And I would follow up on Director Pinkham's comment. If you could expand what you just said to us? If you could talk about the system deficiencies? If you could talk about the competitive market? And clarify, this is not a one-for-one trade, if you will, that's being backfilled? That would probably earn my vote. Director Burke?
One other question around this conversation of how we fill these challenging vacancies. I'm completely on board, recognizing we need to invest in our systems because that's our future efficiency. Keeping them contemporary is critical. This area is something that is increasingly being served by people who are in consultant roles as compared to direct hire employees. Do we reach out to people that are direct consultants, like 1098s versus people that, you know, this is with a, an organization?
What's 1098?
They're basically contractors, direct contractors, as compared to hi, you know, on a consulting basis with individuals.
In a firm versus on your own?
Right. Basically, we're paying the people, we're paying them well, we're paying them fairly. We can get high-quality people, but we're not paying at somebody else's overhead.
Yep, we've done both. We just had, we're just finishing up on a contract for somebody named Deborah Spalding. She'd worked on the, she was the project manager for SEB, the School Employees Benefit Board, as well as paid sick leave, paid family medical leave. So a lot of these things that the state has been passing to us, we are not in a position to be able to react.
Unfunded passing to us.
Yes, correct. We do explore all of those options as well. We're, we're open to the whole gamut.
Okay, you heard us as far as fleshing it out.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Number two, BTA four, approved purchase of metropolitan-wide area network, the MAN WAN. I love that. Hardware upgrade for elementary schools and one-year support with Dyntech Inc. in the amount of $2,194,364.89. Audit and Finance, November 4th, for approval. Approval of this item would authorize superintendent to execute an agreement with Dyntech Inc. to provide a metropolitan-wide area network, elementary hardware upgrade with one-year support, for a total not to exceed amount of $2,194,364.89. Take it away, CFO Bergy.
So I would say, if you're not familiar with what this, this was part of BTA four, is what we promised the taxpayers that we were going to do. In my mind, how I equate it is, we have technology, it's similar to a road. We have to repave the road and we have to widen the road to have more lanes. So we're going from one gig to 10 gigs in all of our elementary schools, and this is the second phase. We did all the secondary schools as well previously. I would say that this is, our net cost to us is actually $1.1 million. It's eligible for a federal grant called E-Rate, and that grant has been approved. And so it's a reimbursement basis. Once we have finished the project, we'll get those dollars back. And, and we did make two changes based on Audit and Finance comments. We put in a sentence that it does not impact any of the fiber sharing agreement with the city, and that is part of the $3.2 million budgeted for the upgrade.
And can you add the $1.1 million federal grant to the snippet that shows up on the action item, please? When it comes before us for action? I, I appreciate that it's probably in the bar, but optics being what they are, I think that's an important consideration. Number three, thank you. January 2020, August 2021, City of Seattle Grant to Expand the Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program came before OPS, November 7th, for consideration. Approval of this item would authorize superintendent to accept the City of Seattle Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program grant funding in the amount of up to $473,525.09 to fund the nutrition program in 20 district schools and authorize the superintendent to take any necessary steps to implement the action. Chief of Operations, Fred Podesta, take it away.
Thank you. The City of Seattle's Office of Sustainability and Environment offers a grant that augments the federal Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program that allows us to provide the program to schools that don't meet the federal parameters. Schools can apply for this at, if they're at 60% or above free and reduced lunches. This program is aimed to, and there are other parameters as well, that's just the threshold to apply, allows us to offer the program in, in the previous school year, we offered it in 18 schools, where this year's grant would give us enough funding to offer the program in 20 schools and stretch a program that we have at the federal level.
And how are the 20 schools chosen?
In descending order of, of level of FRL, of free and reduced lunch.
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns? Director Mack?
Jen Lincoln's not here, but she takes minutes at our minute, at our meeting, and she's phenomenal. So thankfully, I can look back, as was Director DeWolfe and I were questioning, what, what was it that we, why did we say consideration?
There was confusion about whether it was a contract or a grant. It was, it was just poorly drafted and it was a little unclear. Was it about an expenditure or was it about a grant? It's, it's a grant. There will obviously be a corresponding expenditure when we buy the vegetables.
So.
That got cleaned up.
Did it get cleaned up and redlined or not?
No, because this is being introduced now, so.
But we can't see the changes from, okay.
Yeah, we typically redline between introduction and action.
That's a similar problem to the last bar of not being clear about what came to committee and being able to actually see the changes when it comes here.
That transparency deal is real important for our public. If we could.
I would appreciate having.
Add the red lines.
Red lines.
Between committee, recommendations, and intro.
Yeah, I, I think that's a broad process thing. I.
I think that's how we've had it.
Point taken.
Got it. Thank you.
I think that's how it's been in the past, right?
Not necessarily. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Please, Director Hershey.
We have, Jesus, excuse me. We had a brief conversation about some of the vegetables and things being underutilized because we didn't have the equipment in schools to prepare them properly, most notably asparagus, can't eat that raw. I'm wondering if some of these funds can also be used to help equip some of our schools with the necessi, the necessary tools to prepare some of the vegetables, or is it strictly limited to purchasing food?
This is about purchasing fruits and vegetables. We have other funding sources to try, and, and we are, in fact, making changes in kitchens to allow more preparation of fresh fruits and vegetables.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. Number four, Bex four, Resolution 2019-20-11, acceptance of the building commissioning report for the Cascadia Elementary, Robert Eaglestaff Middle, and Lipton Springs K-8 Schools, formerly Wilson Pacific Project, came before OPS, November 7th, for approval. Approval of this item would adopt Resolution 2019-20-11, accepting the building commissioning report for the Cascadia Elementary, Robert Eaglestaff Middle, and Lipton Springs K-8 Schools Project. Chief Narver, need your help? What I would like to do is take number four, the acceptance, batch it. Listen up, guys, because if you've got questions, you have to yell or forever hold your peace. Numbers eight through 15 are all final acceptance items.
Yes.
And we missed our scheduling on this one. I would like to discuss these in general and ask COO Podesta, if you have a question, name the number that you have a question about. These are intro items, final acceptances for a cause for celebration. This represents a great deal of work that has come before us.
So four and eight through 15 are being batched?
That is correct. That's what I've got on the agenda presently. I do not need to read eight through 15 because my colleagues can read, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
I'd like to, if you don't mind, point out that four is actually a building commissioning report. It's not a final acceptance. It's not the same action.
Okay.
There is a, a final acceptance actually comes even later. This is a, the report of what happened in the building and just saying that it, the building's commissioned and all of the i's and t's.
Okay, I've read it out. Now you have a forecast of what we're going to do when we get to. Questions, comments, concerns for COO Podesta for number four? Director Pinkham?
This, I guess, I don't know what we're on with Cascadia, Robert Eaglestaff, and Lipton Springs K-8. Is this commissioned just for the electronics or is it for the entire project?
It is mostly for building control systems, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, HVAC, those kinds of things. Building systems is typically what the commissioning reports are about.
Okay, so it's not, I guess, kind of what I was used to. This is the final closeout, this project's done, we're all done and completed with it. That will come up later?
That will be the final contract acceptance.
Okay. Because that one, what I kind of hope we would see is some acknowledgement of the native community that offered some suggestions, like for the native talking circle that is now on the Robert Eaglestaff site, the preservation of the murals that were able to be done. Hopefully, I can see some of that in those closing documents as well, when that portion comes up. I just wanted to clarify what this one was.
All right.
Thank you.
And if you don't remember, we'll remind you.
I, thank you.
Number five, Bex five, SCAP in Distress School Grant, Resolution 2019-20-18, new in lieu, replacement option for the Kimball Elementary School, Northgate Elementary School, and Viewlands Elementary School replacement projects. This came before OPS, November 7th, for approval. Approval of this item would approve Resolution 2019-20-18, as attached to the board action report certifying that new facilities identified in the project application, Form D-3, for the Kimball Elementary School, Northgate Elementary School, and Viewlands Elementary School replacement projects submitted to the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction, OSPI, will be built in lieu of modernizing the existing facilities, and that the existing facilities will be demolished. Take it away, COO Podesta.
This is administrative step as part of the famous deform process that involves state funding, that the board adopts a resolution stating that for these projects, we're going to demolish and replace the buildings, not modernize the buildings. And it's, we need to assert. And it's, we need to assert it along the way, and this is not our assertion.
And this is one place where our legislature legislators have actually done us some good in terms of identifying buildings for the SCAP...
Yes.
...designation. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Questions, comments, concerns? Director Mack?
I have to cha- uh, channel Director Gary here. And I didn't catch this when it came through Ops, but as I'm reading through the bar, one of the pieces that's missing that would be perhaps informative for historical knowledge is, uh, the original building, uh, years of those buildings. As Director Gary used to point out, um, we often aren't missing the history of what's gone on and what we have done in the past. And we're making a huge statement that we have decided that we are gonna demolish these buildings. And, you know, previous taxpayers paid for those things. Um, so kind of acknowledging the year in which the construction happened, the condition of the buildings...
The why.
That are so, I mean, we've got scores that show how bad they are, so we can, we can justify this. But those two pieces, I think that, you know, the construction date and the justification around the, um...
Sure.
Building condition would be helpful to add to the bar for explanation.
Other comments, questions, concerns? Director Pinkham.
I guess I do gotta ask the question about potential landmarks that may get in the way if we're demolishing buildings. Do you, uh, you know of any of these?
Well, uh, we've heard some rumblings, um, about Northgate, believe it or not. But that, you know, that, that's a separate track. We, we have a plan and we need to announce to OSPI our plan. Um, and we'll cross that bridge when we come to it.
Okay. And also a clarification, as I'm looking at these resolutions, it has three of our district, uh, board directors' names on them right now. We'll update that when it comes to...
Obviously, they'll be revised with the correct names.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Moving on. Number six, BEX five, award architectural and engineering contract P-1627 to NAC Architecture for the Kimball Elementary School project. This came before Ops November 7th for approval. Approval of this item would authorize a superintendent to execute AE contract, which means?
Architecture and engineering.
Thank you, sir. P-1627 with NAC Architecture and the amount of $5,0462.06 plus reimbursable expenses of $35,000 for architectural and engineering services. The total contract amount of $5,45,462.06 is for the Kimball Elementary School project with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent and to take any necessary actions to implement the contract. Take it away, COO Podesta.
This is one of the schools mentioned in the previous action that will be demolished and a new school, um, will be built. Um, and this allows us to hire the architect to design our project.
Competitive bid?
Yes. It's a, yes.
And did it come in as expected, higher, lower, what?
Uh, it's, um, uh, within our budget expectations for this work.
Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues, Director DeWolf and Director Pinkham.
Thanks, President Harris. Um, just mostly just for the record too, um, can you just chat a little bit about the architectural and engineering contract versus actually, you know, one of the conversations we have, particularly with the student community workforce agreements right now is we want to be thoughtful about our BEX five projects, but this doesn't necessarily touch that work yet, right? This is...
These are professional services on the front end. These are typically not represented trades. These are...
But they're gonna hire our kids as interns, right?
Um, we would hope.
Director Pinkham.
It's been a while since I've been on operations, but as far as I recall the time I've been here, this is the first time I seen plus reimbursable expenses. Is this something new that's been part of these negotiations? Why isn't that 35K tied into the total amount?
Um, I, uh, I have seen this on previous actions. I, I can't really speak to, um, why we structure it this way and, uh, into the bottom line. Typically, there are ancillary services these firms use for drawings or others, other pieces. Sometimes other direct costs. I would have to delve down into why we're splitting it out in this case.
Okay, yeah, because then I'd wonder if those reimbursable expenses can then be subject to change orders. Oh, gee, I'm sorry, we had $50,000 worth of reimbursal expenses.
So how do we address that dichotomy?
We'll have a, a little bit more clarification about what the reimburseables are about.
Terrific. Thank you so much.
Or it'll be one number, um, one of the two.
Director Burke.
Two things. Oh, question, do we, have we identified what type of model we're gonna use for building this for the, is it, if it's gonna be a...
Ed specs, you mean?
No, no, the...
The, uh, whether it's GC- alternative public works or not.
GCM, you need to spell it out. That's an acronym now.
Uh, General Contractor Construction Management. There are other types of alternative works. I don't think we've made a formal decision. Typically, whole school buildings, kind of leaning in the direction of alternative public works.
And then for this, because it is the architecture, engineering, um, I know when we were in our BEX conversations and I visited Kimball, um, to meet with their community, there is a, um, a very strong interest around the school remaining open concept. And then I also recognize that some of our open concept schools have, you know, more difficulty with noise and whatnot. So I just want to acknowledge that and make sure that it's in the conversations, I assume, as part of their school design advisory team, that they're engaging with the community. Um, but there, there were some very passionate people, um, wanting to, um, to have elements of their prior, their existing school transfer to their new school model. I just want that to be on the record.
Director Mack.
Uh, speaking to getting that input and the processes we have to kind of help that carry forward, that the folks on the school design advisory team, that's part of their job, is to help inform what happens at the school in the design process. And, uh, we've had conversations in Ops about helping to daylight, ensuring that those, uh, committees are reaching out and being inclusive and getting the voices heard and, and, and having those processes be robust.
So anybody, I, you pointed this out, but I guess I see it as very ironic that a number of our other open... What's your phrase?
Open concept.
Open concept schools are distressed by them in terms of delivering educational services to our students. And in fact, we may be retrofitting or adding in architectural elements to address the delivery of education.
That is the reason why I bring it to everybody's attention here. Not so much because I want to say it should be open concept or it shouldn't, but we heard some really strong testimony about leaning into conflict. And this is a case where understanding pros and cons and finding, you know, is there, is there a yes and in this conversation? It comes through conversations, and I just don't want people to be surprised if they hear differences of opinion on what the building should look like.
Well, and/or do we take some of the critics of the open concept that are living with it now, much to their chagrin, and, and blend that together so that... We're a school system, not a system of schools.
Yeah, I've certainly gotten earful from principals in open plan schools.
That's a very good point. Ed specs don't support that. And again, we're spending money to ameliorate some of those issues in the delivery of education to our students. And I'm all about real pretty schools, but at the end of the day, it's supposed to be about our students.
So to the point about open concept or not, the educational specs that are currently in place are what get built to. So if a school was getting built three years ago, it was under those ed specs. And they change over time, they get redone. One of the things, just as a preview, and, well, you won't be here, but as a preview for my other colleagues...
But he'll be watching Channel 26 every Wednesday.
But the ed specs are something that do change, um, but really do need to be, from my perspective, daylight, daylight to the public as to, under this current facilities master plan and this, these projects, these are the ed specs that we are working with because this is what has been adopted and approved. And so in the 6900, that's one of the, um, pieces we're trying to clarify and what goes into the facilities master plan and how that's clarified. So...
6900 means policy?
The 6900, yes.
Series or policy 6900?
Policy 6900.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Number seven, BEX five and K-3 Class Size Reduction Grant, award architectural and engineering contract P-1666 to Miller Hayashi Architects for the West Seattle Elementary School Edition Project. This came before Ops November 7th for approval. Approval of this item would authorize superintendent to execute the AE Architectural and Engineering Contract, P-1666 with Miller Hayashi Architects in the amount of $2,231,962.06 plus reimburse expenses of $30,000 for architectural and engineering services for the West Seattle Elementary School Edition and Renovation Project with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent and to take any necessary actions to implement the contract and to allow the transfer of $4,400,000 from the K-3 Class Size Reduction Grants to the West Seattle Elementary School renovation and addition project to construct a 12-classroom addition. Take it away, COO Podesta.
Again, uh, like the last action, this is an architectural and engineering contract to design work for a, uh, kind of mon- a minor modernization of, uh, West Seattle Elementary School.
And the comments regarding the $35,000...
Same, same applies.
Will be clarified as well, correct?
Absolutely.
Other questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Director Pinkham.
So the first part of this is more for the architectures and engineering, the 2.2 million dollars. And the 4.4 million dollars, is that then for the actual construction?
Yes. That, that's to get the project funds together.
For the project, so it's not the total cost of the project, total, do you know what the total cost of this project is?
$28 million.
Thank you.
And I might add, in District Six, they're doing awesome sauce work at West Seattle Elementary School. Awesome sauce work.
And then my same comment as the last one, that plus reimbursable expenses.
We'll spell that out in more detail.
Okay, now we are eight through 15. These are final acceptances. They do not have to be read into the record pursuant to advice from Chief Counsel Narver. If you have comments, questions, concerns, please identify them by number and ask said questions. Comments, questions, concerns? For intro items, number eight through 15, final acceptances, cause for celebration. Director Mack.
Uh, I don't have any questions. I just want to point out that these are celebratory, but additionally celebratory for our efforts around, um, environmental sustainability. The geothermal wells, um, heating projects are, uh, energy efficient, labor-saving. They're just really awesome. And, um, so double yay on both doing a good job of finishing these projects, but also that we are, uh, working towards our environmental sustainability goals.
And I might add, for the record, these all came before Ops November 7th, all for approval. Could you also extend our thanks to Richard Best and his team, since we don't get to see him anymore? But, but they do a pretty extraordinary job and, and we recognize that.
I'll pass it along. I, I think he, uh, knows, uh, how the board appreciates their work and...
Well, and he's probably watching now.
And, um, you know, him not being here might be the greatest thanks of all.
Director Pinkham, please.
Yeah, so before you go, uh, what a, I think when we first came on this board, we were talking about turf and crumb rubber and getting away from that. How are we dealing with that? Are we, now again, most of our fields being now this corked field and...
Our fields have about a 10-year lifespan and we're always, any, anything that wasn't, uh, the natural cork material is being replaced with that.
Thank you.
And I'm amending my thanks and my board comments for that. That was our first good resolution. We are adjourned at 9:13. Thank you all.
Thank you.